Oppose, same side? Motion's carried. So now I believe we need to have a motion to open the public hearing for the, to discuss stormwater rates.
So moved. Second.
Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion is carried. At this time, I'd like to invite forward John Scamp is here. He's with Crow Horwath, who is our rate consultant, financial consultant for this and to explain the rate increase.
Welcome back.
I'll just kind of go over a few highlights. I'll go through the reports in detail or whatever. Basically, the stormwater utility has been bringing in a little over $200,000 a year. But as we went through the list of projects that needed to be done, they came up with a list of over $5 million projects that really need to be done to address some of the stormwater situations, about 5.7 million. What we had proposed is that, obviously, the monthly rate needs to be increased so we can bring in some more money to address these projects over some reasonable period of time. We have proposed raising the rate from the current $1.80 to $3.50 per month. And in all the surveys, we've had, Dan provided some surveys, ones we've looked at and talked about as well, $3.50 and the final rate of $4.50 as well within a very reasonable range to compare throughout the state. But as we go, if we're raised it to $3.50 per month, and the ordinance had in front of us, the attorney proposed it to do that immediately, raise it to $3.50 immediately, they'll give us about $242,000 a year to address that $5.67 million of projects. That gets us down to maybe cover those over 24 years. But really, what we're looking at doing there is bringing in a pot of money if we can address some of the smaller projects, get started on some of the bigger ones, see if we can find some matching funds and things like that, and obviously, look at the project cost as best we can. Could even leverage the bond issue if some of those things needed. But the second part of it is, is that we're proposing in January of 2017, the crazy rate of $4.50 cents. So about, you know, giving everybody a, you know, well over a year and a half plan for the next phase, then if we're proposing go to $4.50 cents. And that would bring in over $350,000 a year to address that $5.77 million of projects. It's really a rate increase needed to address projects, kind of holding its own now, not throwing off a lot of money so we can complete some needed projects throughout the city. So that's for me to, on behalf of answering questions.
I think it's kind of interesting that during the current rate to do those projects, it's going to take us 159 years to do those projects. If we do the one, the one rate increase to $3.50, it takes 24 years. And then you add the other one to go to $4.50 on January 1st, 2017, and it takes it down to 16 years. So still 16 years is a substantial amount of time.
And new other projects, new projects to come up.
Yeah, and I want to emphasize that these projects are throughout the city. There's not one concentrated area. We have some stormwater issues throughout the whole city.
We have any questions after the public has.
Okay. Thank you, John. Dan, any one add to that? Okay. I'll open it up to public comments. Anybody have a, a name, Brad? Mr. Bedrow?
Are these rates a percentage straight across the board, where some people don't have to pay the increase?
Nobody's exempt from stormwater.
All residential straight across the board, the businesses and investors, how many ERUs decide that they're lost in their roof?
Everybody would see the same percentage. Okay. Let me just go ahead and percentage.
Dave? Dave Bruchlog, matter of record.
My question isn't about the rate increase or anything. My question's, I have three questions. Clarification of what defines who pays that? And why? Who's the contact person? And what services could we be entitled to? I am speaking for the Knights of Columbus, but we are right on the edge of the city limits. The reason I'm asking this question is because all our stormwater runs into the sewers on our lot that we have installed, which then the water goes into our tiles that we have installed and maintained, which then the water runs into the county ditch and goes to the river. We also pay a county ditch assessment every year. And the reason I'm asking this question is none of our wastewater hits city entities.
You wastewater?
Our wastewater from.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. We do pay a city sewage bill because we were.
You need, you use the.
We were forced to open the city, so we cleaned up our act, and we did that. We pay a sewage bill. I am only talking about the wastewater bill.
Stormwater.
Right.
Stormwater.
Right. We pay approximately right now roughly about $50 a month, $48 or $9 a month. And over the next three years, our bill is going to at least double, if not close triple. And I'm just wondering, we still maintain all our stuff. It does not go through any city entity. So my question is, if we have to pay that and the county ditch assessment, why? And what services are we entitled to? Because you guys don't, none of that stuff that the water goes through is city entities.
Okay. Good question. I'll compare it to my house, Dave.
Okay.
I have the same thing. I have, I put my own tiles in to drain my stormwater off of my roof to a tile that takes it into the river. Okay?
That goes through, your tile dumps into a city.
No, it goes into the county ditch.
Oh.
Goes through county ditch. And I also pay a ditch assessment every year. I mean, there's people throughout all of Decatur that pays a ditch assessment plus they pay the stormwater. So it's, mine will have a lot smaller scale than what yours is, but it's the same, it's the same theory. People do it. I mean, people pay both.
Okay. I didn't, did not realize I.
I did.
I pay a county ditch assessment if it's in the city.
Say again?
I do.
For what?
Mine, I think it's $20 or $25 a year.
It's $25, I think.
It's always one of your first installment of your property tax. They just paid that last week.
So is the Knights of Columbus not assess in the city?
Yeah, no, they are, they are.
And are in it.
We are allowed, law gives us.
Okay. You pay roughly $50, so John, just quick, your math whiz, what will theirs go to when it gets to $4.50?
Well, as he said, it's kind of about double with the first one, so that'd be a hundred, then you go about another.
Twenty-five?
So you're going to be about $150, $140, $150. I will say, the one thing we're looking at here is, is that the impervious area and the way that the charges are put in place is to try to get a fair assessment of how to pay for these stormwater projects throughout the city. It's not trying to say that your water goes through anything with the city, but the Knights of Columbus will benefit from the city addressing stormwater problems out in that area. And so this fee is to say, well, certain runoff, if we don't have credit that your water runs to this place or that place or anything else, it's basically, everybody, all residents pay the same rate, all businesses pay the impervious area, and then the services you have there that should be provided really is an overall addressing of the stormwater needs and flooding or whatever it may be throughout the city. And so then that all city residents benefit from that. You're what I'm looking to try to say where your stormwater goes specifically, it's just the amount of stormwater created.
I hope we answered your question, Dave. Did we? Or not?
I guess you did.
Yeah.
I wasn't worried about the rate.
Yeah.
I just, the condition of why, because I thought all the city water went into a city sewer. That all made sense. It didn't make sense to me in our situation.
Yeah. Maybe we should explain what an ERU is. You know, that's, you know, we throw those terms around and people don't know what that is. I don't know what it is, but I don't know how to explain.
ERU is an equivalent residential unit. So basically, I think here's a 2840.
Yeah. I think it is. What we did is we picked out, randomly picked out five houses and said, okay, each one of these houses has X amount of impervious area. Okay? Okay. So we added those five up, divided it by five, and that's the average, 2840.
And then businesses are measured, and then they're divided by the 2840, it's kind of an equivalent residential.
So our rate right now is a dollar eighty for every 2840. So if a business, and I'll just pick out Fleetwood, for example, has $100,000, we take the 28, 140 into the 100,000 square feet, and whatever that comes out to, take that times a dollar eighty, and that's what they pay. That's, that's how it's calculated.
So basically, it's anyone who's in the city pays it.
Right. Yeah. And there's no exemption.
You don't pay it.
It's, it's, a lot of times you see where churches are exempt from different things. Churches are not exempt from that. Schools are not exempt. Everybody pays the fee.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments?
I don't know right now. No.
On 73, Mary Byer, because will the ERU increase then for our area because the police station used that building before? Are we going to, what you figured out, divided by five?
It wouldn't affect you at all.
Wouldn't affect you at all.
I'm curious.
No. Whatever you're paying is what you're paying. Every house in the indicator, some of them maybe are larger than 2,840, some of them are smaller. That's the average. So every house, no matter where it is, pays the dollar eighty a month.
Currently.
Current. And what we're proposing to move out to $3.50, and then in 2017 to $4.50. All right. Any other comments? We, thank you, Mr. Scamp, driving all the way through Indianapolis for that presentation. Thank you. We need to make a matter of record, but the legal notice was recorded in the, or presented into the newspaper.
So moved.
Second. Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion is carried. We had read the ordinance.
Are you done with the meeting?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have closed the meeting. We have to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion is carried. Need a motion now to open, reopen, or.
Reconvene.
Reconvene. City council, you don't move.
Second.
Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion carried. Thank you. Order 2015-7, which is the stormwater ordinance increasing the fee, was passed on two readings at the last meeting, so it's up for stern and final reading at this time.
Make a motion that ordinance 2015-7 be placed in its third reading by short title? Second.
Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion is carried.
Ordinance number 2015-7, short title, ordinance establishing a schedule of user fees to be collected by the city of Decatur, Indiana from users and owners of property served by the stormwater utility of said city and other matters connected therewith.
Move for adoption of ordinance 2015-7.
Second. Motion's second. I will call it, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Charlie Cook?
Yes.
Phil Crown?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Ken Myers?
Yes.
Order 2015-7 is adopted. Next item is sewer bond ordinance. We have an amendment to that ordinance. What happened is a local bank decided they were interested in buying the refinancing of 2004 bond that we have, and we need to amend our bond ordinance to reflect that change.
Well, it's more than that, if I can add to that.
Well, I wouldn't expect something different from your turn.
I know, I know. There is, there was some question about whether the bond had to be re, or tendered in order for repurchase, and to clarify that, because that wasn't addressed in the bond ordinance. The way you're doing is you're refinancing a 2004 sewer bond in order to take advantage of the low interest rates. The repurchase will be at 2%. We're currently paying much higher than that, so it's a benefit to the city. It'll cause the city to save about $145,000, if I recall. But this is an amendment that was added by bond counsel after the first two readings. And basically, what was added was just one sentence, "Notwithstanding the provisions set forth, the both the city may instruct the registrar and paying agent to pay all payments of principal and interest on the bonds via wire transfer on the payment date in same day funds, and presentment of the bonds shall not be required in such case." It's just to clarify how the transaction will be handled. It's the way it has to be done as far as Bank of New York, which is the paying agent, and First Merchants, who is the purchaser. So it's a clarification. So what I would recommend is that you first approve that amended language to be inserted in the bond ordinance, and then you would make a motion to approve the ordinance on third and final reading as amended. Does that make sense?
So we need a motion really to accept that language that Tim just read that it amends our.
So moved. Second.
Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side?
What's that right there?
Motion's carried.
Six. Yeah. You've done two readings already.
So now it's up for a stern and final reading. And remember, this is ordinance 2015-6, and it's being proposed for a third reading as amended.
Make a motion that ordinance 2015-6 be read by short title only as amended.
Second. Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion's carried.
Amended and restated ordinance number 2015-6. An amended and restated ordinance concerning the construction of additions and improvements to the sewage works of the city of Decatur, authorizing the refunding by the city of its sewage works revenue bonds of 2004 if economically advantageous. The issuance of revenue bonds to provide the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said works, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, including issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinance is inconsistent herewith.
Move for ad, move for adoption of amended and restated ordinance 2015-6. Second.
Motion's second. We'll have roll call go, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Charlie Cook?
Yes.
Phil Crown?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Ken Myers?
Yes.
Order 2015-6 is adopted. Thank you. There's an appointment to the Decatur Housing Authority. There's just a little confusion about the Decatur Housing Authority. It's located in Fort Wayne. I think what, what happened is the federal government has regionalized all of these things, and for example, I know Bluffton is in Portland. I don't quite understand all of that thinking, but anyhow, it's a particular point, we still do have to have a housing authority, and there's members, and I need to appoint Clayton Smith of Decatur to the Decatur Housing Authority. And that will be for the period from May 1st of 2015 through August 15th of 2018. So we just need to make that a matter of record.
Is he replacing someone?
Yeah, he's replacing David Butcher.
Tom, I have another, I have to go back on the purchase agreement at some point. I don't know if you have that.
Okay. So we need to really make that a matter of record. We need a motion to accept that.
So moved. Second.
Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Tim found something he didn't like, so we have to go back there.
No, 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 no. It's an additional matter.
Oh, additional. All right.
The bond ordinance really does two things. It authorizes the refinancing of the 2004 bond issue, and it also authorizes the issuance of new, a new bond in the amount of 6,000, or 6 million. The 6 million bond issue will cover the upcoming storm, or sewer projects that we have, that are coming next year on Fourth Street. The relocation of the Interceptor along St. Mary's, and then also a relief sewer. And those are the two primary major projects that will be funded through this new money. And then there's ancillary projects related to that. But in order to refinance the 2004 bond issue and sell the bonds to First Merchants, there's a bond purchase agreement that authorizes that. Bond counsel's prepared an agri-vita. This has been vetted through multiple parties that are involved. Piper Jaffray is the placement agent. Bank of New York is involved. The Indiana Bond Council is involved. ICE, so everybody's reviewed this and signed off on the agreement. But the, this will be signed as of tomorrow. The closing will take place on May 19th, I'm sorry, it'll be actually May, May 19th or at such other date, probably May 21st for tax reasons. And so I need the bond purchase agreement to be authorized, and then the mayor and clerk treasurer to be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city in order to complete the sale to First Merchants.
I'm sure everybody understands what you just said.
If you want me to go over this?
No, we don't.
I didn't think.
No, we did that, Tom. Thoughts? It's on the roof.
Second.
Motion's a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion's carried. Thank you, Tim, really. And along with, basically, what I'm saying, it saves us money by refinancing that. This allows that to happen. Thank you. Melissa? Melissa here is our community coordinator, so she's been working very closely with Main Street, and Main Street has made a recommendation. I'll just turn it over to you, Melissa.
Good evening. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of Decatur Main Street. The design committee and the board of directors have decided on some benches for the pocket park. They are the exact same as the other storage parks. The desire was to have matching benches on both of those corners. Main Street is proposing that there be four benches with back placed in the park. The price of those are $902 apiece, shipping is approximately $500, and it will be shipped from Canada. The Decatur Main Street is requesting the purchase of those four benches for the park. Shipping is about three to four weeks, and we would like to have them in place by the time the sculpture tour and the ARG get out.
I think we established Main Street to do things like this, and this is one of the projects. I'm in favor of funding $4,100, round figures to take care of that purchase of benches.
Main Street is also working with the Bravery and some other local groups that are going to plant flowers and the third circles that are out there, and that funding will come from Main Street's budget.
Yeah. Main Street's only been in existence for probably a year, really, six, eight months, and they haven't had an opportunity to raise any funds. So they're coming to council asking for funds to really take care of the benches at this time.
That's what we asked them to do.
Yeah.
And therefore, I make a motion that we approve the $4,100 some odd dollars for the benches. Get a motion.
I just want to clarify, I put folks in an awkward spot. Yeah, hey, we want to spend $4,100. Where do we have that money at for this? Is it something like rainy day fund or something like that? So that should be included in the motion.
Include that in the motion to take that from the rainy day fund. Second, the motion.
Any other further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion's carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I did want to announce that the city of Decatur, in fact, Nate Richlog and Ann Butcher both received a copy, but our long-term control plan was approved by the India Department of Environmental Management. Doesn't sound like much, but it's taken us a long time to get to that point, that it's approved our plan on what we want to do. So that was kind of a good news thing that we received this week. There was an event that was requested. They filled out the event form, and it's innovative concepts. They're doing some kind of, got the event form here somewhere. There had been an event on the 27th of May, and sound challenge. It's a contest for sound quality and sound decibels. It's a contest for vehicles. So that happens during the daytime hours, out at their location, and I think they're also using the bridge church parking lot for some additional parking. And event starts at 10, goes over at 4, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Passed it around to the police, they had no issue with it, fire, no issue, and street department, no issue. So I definitely wanted to make it a matter of record that we did give them approval to have the event.
Have they talked to their neighbors? That's what I was just going to ask.
I think they did, but I can't say for sure.
What times does it?
10 to 4. I guess we can make a motion that we can, maybe suggest that we approve this with the understanding that they do contact the neighbors about this event.
I think that makes sense. I'm just thinking if I'm the restaurant there.
Oh, communal there?
Yeah.
And the houses that are right behind there.
Rochester Court.
Yeah. It, it, it never go down my mind, it's going to be loud.
Yeah, but these are reasonable hours.
During the day. On a Saturday.
Yeah. It's 10 to 4. We didn't say, hey, we have to contact the neighbors for an event.
I think if, if nothing else, to avoid phone calls into the police department, right?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, notifying them that this is going to be going on, and we know about it.
I mean, it's going to be in the paper, but I don't know if they put some kind of flyers on that addition, on the houses in that addition or something, maybe.
Or contact them personally.
Yeah.
What date is it?
What's up to me? I don't know. I don't know.
Make a motion. Make the motion.
I motion that we.
Excuse me. 27th of May is on Wednesday.
Oh, it is? Yeah. That's what day is it?
No, I don't think this is.
Probably Saturday.
I think it's on Saturday.
20.
It was the 27th day.
June, 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 that sounds better. Which is a Saturday.
Would he have time then to?
Yeah. Yeah, plenty of time to contact neighbors.
So I guess I would motion that we go ahead and prove it, provided that those in the surrounding area are notified of the event going on. Not necessarily as from permission, and we kind of already said they have it, but.
That's fine. That's.
I'll second that motion.
That makes sense. Motion's second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion's carried. Thank you. We had some funding. Last year, when we did stellar application, we committed some funding for the stellar program. It amounted to about $2 million. We passed a resolution for that. As everybody knows, we were not selected as a stellar community. We are in the midst of trying a second time here for the stellar. And last year, we passed a resolution that basically funded $2 million over a period of four years. Looking back, we probably shouldn't have ever tied it to stellar, which we did, so I recommend that we maybe direct Mr. Baker to draw up a new ordinance that rescinds what we did last year. But we still would like to make that commitment over four years of $2 million, which is, comes out really about half a million dollars a year. comes out really about half a million dollars a year. So. You were involved in the discussion about funding of the stellar. Do you want to expound on?
Yeah, what goes alongside this is the capital campaign from our community, and I think we learned our lesson in last year, we did the capital campaign contingent on stellar. And just like the resolution, and so, you know, if we're serious about this and the greater Decatur is all about quality of life initiatives and showing the state that we are serious, that we're going to commit to this regardless. So the capital campaign is about ready to start again, but it's not tied to stellar. We're doing this and we're asking for help. So I think it makes absolute sense. Now, I'm not going to, I don't want to steal the thunder because it's about to launch this next week, but just for everybody's kind of general awareness, you know, it was through numerous entities, it's not just greater Decatur. It's greater Decatur, all they're doing is coordinating this stuff, right? They're pulling us together and there's different, the Parks Department, what the city is trying to do, different organizations, kind of all coming together and say, okay, here's all these quality of life capital projects. And right now, there's been about fifteen million dollars worth of projects identified that could be done, and it's, you know, this could be done over the next decade. We, based on community input, based on the project impact, the viability and readiness, we phased these and we said, okay, what's the priority? Readiness is a big part of it. But we phased these in essentially three different phases, and primarily what phase one projects are, it's what we've put forward in stellar. So it's nothing new. It's complementary projects and what we're moving forward with. But, so fifteen million total for the entire capital campaign, well, I'm sorry, don't put that, fifteen million dollar in projects. If we look at phase one alone, and that's really what the capital campaign is looking to raise money for, is phase one projects. Total cost is about six point four million. The city, through its own money and through accessible grants, will cover over fifty percent of that. So we end up, we end up going to the community and asking for, the capital need, the deficit is about two and a half million. But what that comes down to is that the city commitment is right at one point nine, which sits right in with what we were last year. So from what we're, where the anticipation, you know, the half a million a year, essentially it remains the same. But I do think it's important that we, because we're doing a campaign not tied to stellar, we need to distance our resolution away from stellar as well.
Tim, Phyllis, would you recommend then that we just rescind?
Rescind or repeal? Last year's resolution and add a new one.
Yeah, and we can do that after next year. We wanted to really establish that before people went out and started that capital campaign, which is going to be happening pretty soon, so I don't think we need to take any action.
Are you talking half a million a year starting in two thousand fifteen?
Starting this year?
Or sixteen?
Sixteen, I think.
Two thousand sixteen is what, from a project standpoint? Now, that being said, there's complementary projects that we could do this year. You know, maybe the resolution's extended to five years.
Yeah, yeah. We start two thousand fifteen and go for five years.
So four hundred thousand a year for five years, starting in two thousand fifteen? I just need to know a number to plug in here.
I think that, yes.
Yeah, that should, that should suffice. Okay. Yes, we maybe should have that in the motion form to direct Tim to do that.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. It's something I'm forgetting, one of my forgetting.
I think it shows our commitment. We are going to do these projects over the next decades and accelerate them.
You have to do something with the nature preserve. You have to have council authorize submission of and have Phyllis sign it.
Yeah. Another project that is not stellar, but it's one that we addressed last couple meetings is the nature preserve. Over we annexed that area. Now it's time to move forward. The idea is to get Department of Natural Resources grant, basically. In order to file for the grant, which will come through the Parks Department, the Park Board will be the one to do that, the requirement is that we tell Department of Natural Resources, State Department of Natural Resources, that we have the funding to take care of this. Okay? So we'd be asking a grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. That's matching, otherwise we only have to come up with a hundred only. We have to come up with half of that, a hundred and fifty thousand. And so that's what we're going to hopefully do, but I need council's approval that Phyllis can write a letter saying that we have those funds in two thousand sixteen to, we have those funds and we'll commit those funds for this grant.
And those funds would come from?
We'll probably have to take a, well, we haven't made our CDA plan yet for two thousand fifteen, seventeen, so we'll probably put it in there.
So the letter basically says we have the funds, but we can, when we do our budgets here over the next few months, we can budget that money into the budget.
What I would do though is show that it's coming out of CDA in the letter itself.
That hundred and fifty be a part of the four hundred.
Right.
This year.
That's correct. So the four hundred that you were talking about over five years, that hundred and forty would be.
It's a phase one, that's one of the phase one projects.
Yeah, yeah. But tonight we need, what we need is authority for Phyllis and I to sign those documents and for Phyllis to write that letter saying that we are committed and we have the funds for that.
The reason that we need to get authority is Kyle Quant through NERC is writing the grant application. The grant application has to be submitted by June first, and she has to have all this information to her by May fifteenth in order to give her that time. So we're not going to have another meeting between now and then.
And when would this grant be awarded?
The grant will be awarded, I believe in, it's later, it's in the fall.
I think September.
That's what I was going to say.
By us right after we designate stellar. Stellar's going to be announced in August, and I think this grant.
I believe that's right.
It's not part of stellar, but it's a complementary project.
And most likely the project, the construction project, Nate, I believe, is scheduled probably then in two thousand sixteen, latter part of two thousand sixteen.
I like the motion that Phyllis prepare the orders.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, thank you. Department of, Roger.
I'd just like to remind residents that the spring is in full swing now, and if we could get everybody to try to keep their yard maintained and actually everybody's out about now, if you had some degrees or things like that accumulate during the winter, try to get those picked up. We do have curb type service for picking up grass hippings. Jeremy can explain the type of containers that need to be, we don't want them so heavy to get picked up and things like that. We'd like to encourage people to use property and be a good neighbor.
Thank you, Roger. Left, Department?
Well, just kind of piggyback off what Roger said. Burn barrels were banned under ordinance. It's kind of the campfire backyard get-togethers, and we still do permit recreational burning, but they're not intended to be substitute for the burn barrel. And invite your neighbor over for a softer and love enjoying the festivities, and they're less likely to complain about your campfire, so be a good neighbor.
Good. Does the party appear house next week?
Yeah, it'd be.
Greg?
Just that we're operating well out of the police department now. We're still not ready for an open house. A lot of people have been asking about it. We just have a lot of little details that we would like to have done before we open that up. It's unbelievable sometimes how slow the wheels are trying to get a few things done here. We're getting there, so.
Thank you, Greg. Nate?
Go ahead.
Jeremy, Street Department, end of the session.
Pretty much everything's in full swing. The parks are open, water's on, bathrooms are open. Still a lot of little things going on at the parks, little permit projects, such as signage and landscaping and such. Grass, grow well. Grass collection, brush collection, everything's in full swing. Headed into like spring, summer activities here.
Again, grass and leaves need to be in a container or a bag. We don't have the vacuum, the leaf vacuum out doing that. We can't pick them up unless they're in a bag or a container.
And that has been probably a little bit more of an issue this year than in years past for whatever reason. We've been working against the residents to get it cleaned up.
Good, good.
We are loading mulch three days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, evening from three to five, Saturday mornings from eight to ten, so that seems to be going real well here in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, good, thank you. Dan?
Yeah, the.
Utilities?
The two thousand fourteen consumer compliance reports are out, and anyone drinking water call report. They'll be online on the website. They're going out in the June month of building, and we also have them here at City Hall if anybody wants them. So I have them here tonight if anybody wants them, but that's the three questions we have.
Good, thank you, Dan. Ann?
Yes, ma'am.
Melissa, anything you want to add? Okay. Thank you. Comments from city council members?
Couple of questions. Did we, just the event form thing, did we ever get one from the website?
Yes, we did. I should, I should have said that. Yes, we did.
Any more bids on City Hall?
We haven't got any bids on City Hall. I think the target date or the end date is May twenty-sixth. I think we have to wait that long before we go to the next step, which would be we could put it up for sale through a realtor or have an auction. So we have to wait for May twenty-sixth to pass, but officially we have not received any bids or quotes.
Hope people went through it, but.
Yeah, people have been showing interest, but then we haven't had any.
Anyone's interested, call City Hall.
Yeah.
Last thing, sculpture tour ever approach you about helping them, funding?
Funding?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I'm on their committee.
I always ask the question.
No, sculpture tour, no, we do a lot for them. Jeremy does a lot for them as far as placing the sculptures and what do you call that bottom part?
Base.
The base, that's it. So, yeah. Anything else?
I've been gone for a while, but how about second Jackson?
Second Jackson, yes. It's ironic, last week I sent an email out to the owners of the property and got a response and I said, well, this is the same thing you told me two weeks ago, you know? And I looked, finally I scrolled down, most, the newest responses usually are at the top of an email. This one was at the bottom, so it all kind of fall into place, and we got a mess down there, and then emails even. But basically what they said, they have two interested parties in buying it, but they don't have a specific offer on the table at this time. But they are going to continue to clean things up on the inside and the outside. I do see that they took one ladder down on the outside. That's about all I've seen.
They had, they had a lot of crash out of.
Did they?
Sunday night.
Good. Jeremy, volunteer to pick up, you put it out and we'll pick it up for you, just to try to spur him to get something done there, so. That's kind of the, somebody else? From the public?
State your name for the record, please. My name is Izzy Knight. I moved here to Decatur two years ago, retired, got my house done, and I'm not up here to get you involved on anything tonight, but I am stuck with, between a rock and a hard place with the sculpture tour down here. I took my retirement money and I put together a concession stand. What I'm doing is I got tired seeing stuff on TV about wounded warriors and what nobody's doing for them. So I came up the idea to sell chili dogs and hot dogs to raise money to get us a building and put in a sub shop. When I get that hurdle crossed, I can put ten to fourteen wounded warriors to work, get them off a charity, get them in a job, where they got money in their pocket, where they can save money, buy a house, buy a car, buy everybody else.
I'm not sure, you were, I got a couple of years ago for an event, I'm not sure what event it was now, but that's where I remember it. Wounded Warriors, that's what it was.
So that's what my goal is. Now, my business depends on the public. If I don't get support from the public, then I'm wasting my time. What I need out of the board is, a couple of months ago, one of the gals on the board on the sculpture tour caught me out at True Value and, hey, you got a concession stand? I said, yeah. Would you be interested in coming up and setting up? We need food enters. And I thought I would. She made me that note, time, place, ever, so I thought, hey, I'm in. Now, I did get the trailer done to make the Halloween parade up here at Decatur last summer, and through everybody's help and every stuff, I was able to get my first wounded warrior off a charity.
Well, good, thank you.
Just recently, I helped him at the first year, he got his, to get his settlement, no offense to lawyer, but he was, he was working a lawyer for three years and could not get his disability. When I got involved with him, got it for him in three weeks. He's now getting fifteen, sixteen a month.
Well, good.
I won't tell you how much he got back pay, but he got out of the Monroe, he's from the apartments out there, which I seen the apartment, and even the mice didn't want to live with him. He was able to buy him a house. Now he has no rent payment, no house payment. He's got it made, so inadvertently I get kicked a little bit because now I lost my first wounded warrior, because he doesn't need help anymore. So anybody out there that doesn't have a wounded warrior, I need one. But anyhow, with the tour, took a little while for them to send me an application. Well, I thought it was just personality, because they needed to know what my menu would be so they could put it in their flyer and my name and stuff, that we would be up there. So I filled it out and sent it back to them. Next thing you know, they sent me back saying, the way I took it, that they contacted the wounded warriors project, and I would need to get a hold of them to get a letter from them of permission to send to them for me to come up there and sell them. I emailed them back, told them I didn't need, I wasn't a part of wounded warriors project. I'm not stepping on their toes. I have my own trademark, my own identity, and I even give them my trademark number list and look it up, that's it in, for that notice, and you can see it. I mean, when you walk in, they don't hand these things out to anybody just because you walked in the door and you want one. Took me nine months and a thousand hours to get that. So I tried to explain to them, wounded warriors projects is in the rehabilitation business. Every trademark goes out, it's put in a category. For food and restaurant, I'm code forty-three. I don't know what it is for wounded warriors. And I tried to explain to them, they're in the rehabilitation business, I am in the food business. I signed Clary States, three foot by six foot, wounded warriors sub shop. On the bottom, support, jobs for wounded warriors. So it's pretty clear up there, they don't understand the value of their trademark. When I tried to explain everything to them, then, I didn't know it was going to be here so long ago. If you read the first one and then read the second one, then I kind of explained what they're doing. On the last one, she sent me an email back saying they didn't want to get caught up in a legal battle between identities, and therefore they didn't want negativity being brought down to Decatur Sculpture Tour up there. And I'm like, never in my wildest dream that I think I've had anybody say something with this type of business of bringing negativity to the downtown area. I felt like they, they're kind of insulting me and slapped me across the face with my own trademark because they don't understand it. I did talk to one other person, and they suggested, why don't you go and talk to her? And I said, how are you going to talk to somebody that doesn't, if they don't understand what I explained it to them, then I don't know why I could possibly say to them. The reason here, I'm up here is, one of you, all of you, somebody can down and talk to these people and try to get them to understand the value of a trademark, and I just don't understand what they think wounded warriors.
Well, I, I happen to be on that committee that you're talking about, the Sculpture Tour Committee, I happen to be on that committee. And there is a national wounded warriors organization, is that right?
It's Wounded Warriors Project.
Yeah, is there a national wounded warriors organization?
Yeah, that's what it's called.
Wounded Warriors Project.
Yeah, well.
Like I said.
This is the wounded warriors project.
No.
No.
Wounded Warrior Sub Shop.
Okay, okay. This is wounded warriors, is there another wounded warriors organization out there on a national level?
Yeah.
The Wounded Warriors Project.
There's, there's high schools that's got wounded warrior whatever, but everybody is put in a separate class. So the class I'm in, I'm not stepping on their toes and they're not stepping on mine. If they, these patent attorneys up there in Washington, I mean, you got to cross the Ts without the Is.
So what do you ask them, city councilor, for? To go talk, to go talk to the sculpture tour?
Yeah, get them to understand the difference between, this trademark is not stepping on theirs. I need that.
Ken, you do it.
I feel what they done when they sent me that first email, and then when I went and turned around and I guess I didn't respond the way they thought I would.
Who am I talking to?
So that was the only way they turned around.
Or Jean, who the one?
We just don't want them up there.
Jean.
And I just don't think that's being fair.
Okay.
So.
Best we can do, I would suggest, is have Tim review this information and then keep you posted about what he can do or not do.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just asking for the city's help. It's clear that they want you to, somebody if they don't understand the trademarks. I mean, if I was stepping on somebody's toes, they wouldn't even have gave me that certificate.
Okay. I suppose we should have a motion that directs Tim to look into this. Move. Second. What's the second, all fair and say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Anybody else got anything to say? Mr. Becker, good to see you again. Okay. Tim?
No. Yeah, I volunteer.
Oh, it was Tim?
That reservation, did you want to do that?
What is this on?
To get reimbursed for that $5,000.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Phyllis. Phyllis has a resolution. Really, the city received email that contained a lot of paperwork, because we are a stellar finalist, we have to complete the paperwork and get it back to them. And one of them is a resolution of the City of Decatur that we had sufficient notice and we are eligible for a $5,000 grant from the stellar group. And that's, we did the same, similar thing last year. Last year, we got a $10,000 grant because we are a first-time finalist. This year, they're more or less saying, hey, you went through it, you shouldn't need 10,000, you only get 5,000. And that's what this is for, so we really need to pass, what resolution number would this be?
Six.
2015-6. I don't know if I explained that very well for you, but that's what this is for.
The whole intent is for it to help the application progress.
Yeah, they're reimbursing us for some cost it takes us to do this stellar program.
Move for passage aboard, resolution 2015-6.
Okay. Motion second, all fair and say aye?